This is our regular meeting. Good afternoon of the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners, October 9th, 2025. We start our meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join us for silent prayer. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united all.
Let's do introductions from the dais. Chrissy Rochelle, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summer Odumis, Commissioner.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
I'm Commissioner Denise Dreehouse. Oh my goodness, I know, a little pause there. I was reading, I'm like, wait a minute, what am I saying? All right, we've got some special guests here. This is why I'm distracted, because we've got special guests in the room today. So we've got students, a number of students, from Woodward Career Center. Gail Irvin is their instructor. Thank you all for being here. They're here for their senior capstone class. So we're just thrilled to have young people interested in the work that we're doing, or the work that we're doing in general by way of county, city, federal, state government. So welcome, welcome. Would you mind coming up and just saying a couple of words on behalf of the students and give us some context as to what they're... I mean, we'll try to make it a riveting meeting, as always. Yeah, come on up to the podium here, but we'd love to hear a little bit.
Well, good afternoon. My name is Gail Irvin, and I've been a career tech teacher. This is my 22nd year with Cincinnati Public Schools. And I'm here with some of my seniors in my senior capstone program. So now the students have an alternative pathway to graduation. So part of the graduation requirements for my classes, they've got to do a project. So they can do it on a government entity, a business, something. The main thing, I just want them to learn something. Many of them work, so their tax dollars are at work, but they're not sure how they're being used. So I figured this was a good place to start, to bring them out, so they can see what happens in the county and how things are worked out and to meet our county commissioners. So thank you for having us.
Thank you so much for being here, we really appreciate it. All right, I'm going to make a motion that we approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Odumis?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm also going to make a motion that we excuse Commissioner Reese.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Odumis?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments? Nothing online? Anybody here for public comments? Seeing none, we're going to move on. We'll go to comments and motions of the commissioners. Commissioner Summer Odumis?
Thank you so much. Just a few comments, and as you mentioned earlier, Madam President, we do have a third commissioner who's not here. So it's three of us who oversee 830,000-plus people within the whole county. Any community you can think of that's close by or even a little far out, we're responsible when I say responsible, when funding comes in. We have to approve a lot of that for road structure, infrastructure, activities that happen, we fund those activities, not the majority, but a lot of them. We have tax levies that take care of young people and seniors. So I'm just trying to give you a little summary. I know you've read up about us, and I'm just really proud to say I'm the first African-American who has ever been on this county commission. It was 234 years before they selected one. I'm the first here and the first African-American woman in the state of Ohio to be a county commissioner. So very, very proud of the position and assignment that I have up here at this dais. Just a few announcements, I'm going to say the... Well, I'll say the best for last. I attended the Hamilton County Addiction Response Full Coalition meeting, and President Dreehouse is the chair, is the chair or director of it?
Chair.
Chair. And it was just awesome last Friday. All of the participants that were there, providers, people who work out in the street to help reduce addiction in any way, and I just want to applaud you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dreehouse, it was just awesome. The program book and the brochure that had lots of statistics on where we've come from, and we've come a long way, much farther to go. We have millions more to spend in another round that has come forth for us, and I'm excited about passing those monies out as they apply to help with addiction. So that's a major problem in our county and all over, really, the United States. I also attended the Bank's Urban Planning Executive Summary. I had a virtual, as they talk about, a virtual meeting, as they talk about what the plans or some of the draft plans are for down in the banks to revitalize that area even more. Just attended this morning the OKI Board of Directors meeting, where we looked at transportation and infrastructure, and of course, again, Hamilton County is receiving some of those monies for that. And just attended the firefighters memorial, they have it every year for those who have lost their lives in the process of fighting for all of us in fires. So it's always a moving occasion. And lastly, I just wanted to say this, I knew I worked in the, had the best job there is, working for the county, but I saw this article on the 7th of October. So I not only work at the best place, but I live in the best place areas, according to this article that Cincinnati Suburb ranked number 17 in the best suburbs to live in all America, which is Blue Ash, and I am a resident of Blue Ash for the last four years. And I was just really proud to see that they ranked extremely high. It's a nice place to live and a nice place to play. So I wanted to kind of do a shout out for them, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you. I too was going to mention the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition Panel and the meeting that we had. We had a panel prior to the large meeting up at the coroner's office to make sure that folks at the state level and at the federal level understand what we're doing here in Hamilton County by way of addiction and the retrofit that we did over in the Justice Center to create 90 beds for mental health and addiction services in the jail, so that those that want to participate in that program have the supports they need, both while they're in the facility and once they leave. And so there were representatives from the Attorney General's Office here in Ohio, from Senator Moreno's office, Senator Husted's office, Rachel Baker was there, Karen Brownlee was there, and Senator Ingram was there. And so I just want to thank them for their participation. It is so important that we continue to have these partnerships at all levels of government to support those in need here in Hamilton County. So I appreciate, Commissioner, you mentioning that and coming to that large meeting. Also, a couple of events I've attended on behalf of the commission. One was the animal care event. It was their first fundraiser, and they had a lot of animals there, a lot of dogs. They had a red carpet, and they had the dogs go on the red carpet, it was really interesting. I had to admit that I'm not, I'm not a person that has pets, but my kids do, so it's like I'm claiming that. But it was, it was a really great event, and they're very excited about the new facility that we've got coming online, so I was able to speak to that a little bit. I also went to the River Roots Celebration. We've got a big celebration here in Hamilton County on the river, down at the banks, it's called River Roots. It is a celebration of all things Cincinnati and in this region. We've got steamboats that are here, there's food, there's music, and so it celebrates our heritage. It also reminds us that we are the gateway to freedom for so many people that came up from the South. And so it celebrates all the aspects of our history, so I hope people get a chance to go down. I know my family is, we're taking my mom down on Sunday for brunch cruise, so we'll be taking advantage of what's happening. So I do hope people go down and take advantage of the opportunity. I also attended an event for women, helping women. The focus was on the work that Francie Pepper did in this community related to domestic violence, and so was happy to represent at that event. And then the firefighter memorial, Commissioner, as you mentioned, the annual event to remind us how dangerous some of the jobs are in government and how we need to thank our firefighters for not only running into danger when the rest of us are running away, but also the daily work they do to save lives in our community as first responders. So that's all that I have. Oh, one more?
Yeah, can I just, you brought up some stuff for me, you stirred some stuff for me, as I looked at the television yesterday, I think you did an interview, I don't know if it was yesterday or the day before, and I just want to applaud you again. You didn't pay me to say all this, but when you talked...
I was going to say this is, yeah.
Yeah, you talked about River Roots being a gateway to freedom, and that River Roots is a cultural, historical heritage thing, and for us not to lose sight of that. And I just want to applaud you for that, and I thank you for bringing up that element that has not really been spoken about, about this River Roots. And then lastly, one other, two other things, sorry, is that the youth that are here, and we say this all the time, the youth are our future, but we need to really listen to them, not only listen, but hear them and communicate with them. I had a talk with some 4th and 5th graders in Avondale, and they just blew my mind about what's going on in the school system and what they're dealing with, and so I would not have known that, I was naive to some of that. And so just be open to talk to even, if you want to call me, 513-946-4410. And just tell me what you think, or what we should be doing differently, or whatever, since you're finally finding out what we do. But you guys are just, I want to use the word precious, but they're older than that, but you guys are just so important, your legacy is important, that's all.
We're really excited to have you, I don't know if you can tell. Really excited to have you here. All right, Administrator Aluda.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just a couple of notes. First, before I get into some actual by leave legislative items, first, as the board is aware, I just wanted to note that yesterday there was a groundbreaking out in Redding for the new Jivodon facilities out there, state-of-the-art $215 million production facility, roughly 300 new jobs, bringing about $23 million in payroll to the county. I bring it up because the commission was heavily involved with incentivizing that facility to relocate to this location, both through the application of an enterprise zone, economic development finance package, and also allocation of site readiness dollars to help prepare that site for the ultimate construction. And we, I know every year the board puts money into site readiness, and it is a little bit of these long game, waiting patience games, as we're preparing new sites for ultimately jobs and investment. But this announcement yesterday in Redding shows what happens when you do play that long game, that you do, that it does ultimately produce benefit. So I just wanted to highlight that and congratulate the board for their, for their vision on that. I also wanted to just note a couple of other things. We did an onboarding this morning for some employees coming in. Numbers are a little bit down, as the board knows, we're going through a bit of a hiring pause, but in particular, out of Job and Family Services, we had three new employees. One in particular was a children's services worker from Brigham Young University, who straight out of school, who saw this job. So all that to say that we've been noticing that, that some of our new hires are coming from further and further away. Certainly love hiring folks from right here in, in the county and in the, in the local area, but I think as the county continues to do bigger things, that rep is getting out there, and people want to come work for the organization. So I wanted to pass that on. And since we do have students here today, just also wanted to note, we had, earlier this week, we had a few other high schools that were in here doing some career-type exploration as well. So it's something that we really like to lean into whenever we can, is to help, especially at the high school level, students who are looking at different ways that local government interacts with things that they are interested in. So to Ms. Irvin, I would say if there's, if there's different ways that your students are looking to plug in or have questions about different departments, I'd be happy to give you my contact information afterwards, and more than happy to have any of your students hook up with us, just to understand a little bit more about what we do at the county and how it might relate to the things that they want to pursue. With that, Commissioners, I do have a few by leave items themselves. So the first item is by leave item one in your packet. This is another resolution, we had a couple of these last, last week, this is a resolution authorizing the employment of special legal counsel. This is in a particular instance where because of the nature of the action being filed, it is in conflict with something that the prosecutor's office has motioned or been a part of, so just out of an abundance of caution, I think the prosecutor's office is looking to avoid that appearance of impropriety and thus recommending outside legal counsel for this particular case. Commissioner, I don't know if you wanted to handle these one at a time or go through all of them? The second one is actually a, an appointment. It's an appointment of a member to the America 250 Ohio Hamilton County Local Committee, James Marable, am I saying that right? By Leave 3 is a resolution authorizing a second amendment between the Board of County Commissioners and the Council on Aging. This is the reallocation of some of our American Rescue Plan Act funding, $363,139 to the Council on Aging for utility assistance. This will assist roughly 720 additional households. The board had a question last time as to whether this was to fund folks already in process or new individuals. Our understanding is that this would be new individuals, so I wanted to make sure the board had that answer. And finally, by leave number four, I think the commission referenced River Roots. This is an extension, an amendment of our grant with River Roots. It's by leave number four, budget adjustment number 43, is additional $150,000 for, for our large event grant, tourism grant for River Roots to expand their entertainment, public health and safety operations at the, at the festival. Administration recommends all four of the by leaves, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Summer Odumis, any comments or questions?
Just two comments. By Leave 3, I'm just real happy that we have monies left over that we had to expand and that we gave it, or we're planning on giving it to the Council on Aging as our population gets older and older, so very appropriate. And by Leave 4, the River Roots, they had asked about another additional allotment, and I'm agree, in agreement with this. This is their first time coming to us as far as a large event grant, this is their first time, I guess they didn't figure things out the way they should, need additional money, and I'm going, going to agree this time, since it was their first time asked it. That's all I have.
Thank you. I too was going to comment on by leave number four. The dollars that we're presenting here are related to economic development and a clawback from a different project, and so I too was a little hesitant about this, but I'm willing to support it because this is directly related to economic development, and I think this event is going to bring economic activity to the region, both by way of the hotel motel tax and the sales tax. And so I think it's important that we make sure that it goes off without a hitch, and it's the best that it can be. So I agree with you, Commissioners. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve of by leaves one through four.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Odumis?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, let's move into the regular agenda. The engineer is here, Eric Beck. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Just one item today. This is a resolution for a joint agreement for 2025, 2026, to a joint agreement with Delhi Township and the Board of Trust, or Board of Education for Oak Hill Schools. This is where we share a loader for snow and ice operations. We split the cost three ways with, with the two other entities, and it's $4,508 out of the Road and Bridge Fund.
Commissioner, any questions?
I'm just wondering, Eric, how many loaders do we have in the county for salt? Is this the only one we have?
No, this is not the only one we have. We typically rent them at all of our domes because of the wear and tear salt does on equipment, so we rent them on an annual basis, so that we're not having to replace them annually.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve of item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Odumis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move into the consent agenda. Administrator Aluda.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just by way of explanation, since Engineer Beck was up here to the students here, here in particular, as you heard, we're talking about salt, and we're getting towards the time of the year when we, when we do this type of thing. We have loaders that we, that we use, both for tires and for salt and things like that. The engineer is responsible for the maintenance of county roads. So if you're on a county road, whether it's potholes, paving, et cetera, salt, that's what the engineer does. So if you are not in the county and you're in a municipality, it's not Eric's fault if it's...
Oh, I was wondering where you were going with that.
Just wanted to make sure people weren't going to blame you for something that wasn't your bad, Eric, so.
Not, not to point out any specific jurisdiction.
Absolutely not.
Here we are. Let me take item number two.
Sure.
Because it is a resolution reappointing a member to the Earthworks Appeal Board, and it's Chris Habel. So just want to take the opportunity to thank Chris for his service on this board. And, you know, as always, we're very grateful to the volunteers that step up.
Thank you, Commissioner. By Leave item, I'm sorry, Consent Agenda item number three. This is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Free Store Food Bank. This is an amendment to the, similar to what we had with the Council on Aging. This is an amendment reallocating some of our ARPA funds to the Free Store Food Bank in the amount of $363,139. You will note that's the exact same as the amount to the Council on Aging, as we split this reallocation 50/50, but this is estimated to allow for an additional 1.1 million meals to be funded through the Free Store Food Bank. Item number four is Budget Adjustment Number 40 for the General Fund. This is primarily for a federal grant to assist the coroner's office and the crime lab with processing of DNA tests. Item number five is a credit card charge in the amount of $141.38 for the Veteran's Services Commission. Item number six is a waste reduction grant being provided from the Department of Environmental Services to Cincinnati Urban Promise in the amount of $12,827, and this is for the acquisition of composting equipment. We have several Job and Family Services items. Item number seven is a single-source agreement with Belmont Pines Hospital for Residential Treatment Services, $182,923. Item number eight is an agreement with the Legal Aid Society of Greater Cincinnati for consulting services. This is related to the Kids in School Rule Program operated through Job and Family Services at $1.58 million. Item number nine is a renewal of a memorandum of understanding with Juvenile Court to handle dependency docket cases for, for Job and Family Services at $1.6 million. Item number 10 is a single-source agreement with BHS, I'm sorry, BHC Fox Run Hospital, doing business as Fox Run Center for Residential Treatment Services, $503,000. Item number 11 is a renewal with, of a single-source agreement with a Place of Hope LLC for group home services in the amount of $183,000. The total amount of those JFS items was 4.05 million. Item number 12, Commissioners, is an agreement with the, with CAA, the Community Action Agency, for rental assistance for tenants that are currently in eviction court. Item number 13, and Commissioners, I'll defer to you, is how do you, how you want to deal with these, because I know we have some folks here for these items, I can go through them really quickly, and then we can open up if, at your deference.
Why don't you go through them, and then let's call, I would like to call forward the elected officials that are here from different jurisdictions.
So these are four items that we have related to the Economic Impact Grants that the county gives out on an, on an annual basis, and these are grants the county gives to political subdivisions in the community to help these communities with various projects that will lead to economic growth in, in their communities. So we have four grants today, two of them are actually to the same community. Item number 13 is an agreement with the Village of Lachlan for $140,595. This is for a streetscaping project in the Village of Lachlan. Item number 14 is an agreement also with the Village of Lachlan for $290,000. This is to acquire a historic building for preservation and redevelopment on Mill Street in Lachlan. Item number 15 is a resolution with the authorizing an agreement Item number 15 is a resolution with the, authorizing an agreement with the City of Mount Healthy for $250,000. This is for the facade improvement, their facade improvement program, program along Harrison Avenue. And item number 16 is an agreement with the Village of North Bend for $290,000. This is to, related to their William Henry Harrison Riverfront Park, the construction of a trailhead and some road improvements and park, park amenities in, in that, in that park. The administration recommends approval of the consent agenda. Happy to defer to you, Commissioner, as it relates to comments and questions on.
Yes, so I know that we have a number of people here. Please come forward if you would like to speak to items 13, 14, 15, or 16. These are the revitalization grants. Yeah, come on up to the dais.
Hi, I'm Doug Sammons, the mayor of the Village of North Bend, and this is the second time I've presented in front of you because initially you gave us $400,000 to buy the property in which we are putting the park. So many of you may or may not know, but we are the home of two U.S. Presidents. So William Henry Harrison is entombed in our village, and then his grandson Benjamin Harrison, our 23rd President of the United States, was born in the Village of North Bend. And so what I decided to do when I became mayor back in 2012 is to make the river an asset of the village. And so we were able to acquire that property through the money that you provided to us to build this park. And we've also gone after other grants. We got the Ohio Capital Grant, which was for a half a million dollars, which is then we are just finishing up with phase one. So I would invite you all to come out to kind of see what we've done so far. And then this will help us where if you, I know Denise, you've come to the celebration every year for William Henry Harrison's birthday, but right across the street down on Brower Road is where we're going to put the trailhead, which will provide for additional parking and access to the park. And then the road that goes down into the park of, and into the park, providing black topping and widening of the road so that you have an in and out. Right now, the road is about a car and a half width. We need to make it to where people can come in and out without having to pull over into the grass, what have you. So this grant will help us with that trailhead and with the improvements to the roadway into the park.
Great. Thank you for being here, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else here to, okay? All right, thank you. And just for the students, we have some dollars, they're discretionary dollars, that we're able to use. We have 49 jurisdictions in Hamilton County, 48 of them are outside the city of Cincinnati, obviously. And so we partner with the local jurisdictions to create economic activity in these areas, and the local communities define what they need most and what they'd like to use the dollars for. And so that is what we're doing here. It's a very competitive process, and so you just heard an example of how one community is going to use those dollars. We'll look forward to the ribbon cutting or groundbreaking or whatever is going on out there. And then when they go from all the way to the west, all the way to the east, and then up to the north. So we try to spread them out as much as possible, and Kelly Adamson is the person that helps to run this program. So thank you, Kelly, for being here as well. So Commissioner, do you have any questions related to any of the consent agenda items?
Yeah, a few comments. It's very evident for, for me that as a board, we look at the people that have been in the shadows, and I was looking at the allocations that are here, and homelessness, rental assistance, home repair, food, the seniors, as I said earlier. And I don't know, I've only been here six years, but previously, I don't know if there was such an emphasis on just the general per, person who's in the community and what their needs are. And I'm just really proud of this whole board who is looking at how we can help those that can't sometimes help themselves. I also wanted to bring up about JFS, and just really, I'm not going to ask you any questions, but just really proud of, as we look at the allocations for our youth and Job and Family Services, that I checked out where those locations are, and they're all in Ohio. And so we're trying very hard to have our young people stay in this area as much as possible, and I want to thank you, John, and of course, Michael, for making sure that our children are placed as close to home as they can be. And I believe that's it for me.
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion that we approve of consent agenda items two through 16.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Thank you. Administrator, do we have anything else?
I have no further items for you, Commissioners.
No.
All right, I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Thank you.